Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome again to the second this week Joint Planning Committee. Welcome too to members of the public sat up there. The usual housekeeping, if I may. There are no plans for a fire alarm test this evening. So if there is a continuously ringing bell, we should leave the building as quickly parked as possible by the green-marked exits there, there and on my right here. We gather underneath the canopy outside Waitrose, perhaps for a bit of late-night shopping. Could you, and members of the public, please switch your mobile phones either to vibrate or off so that we are not disturbed? And, members, can we make sure that our part cards are plugged in and speaking to the microphone as we are being webcast? One last point, members of the public. This is a meeting held in public. It is not a public meeting, so other than those designated public speakers, I would prefer it if you restrained yourselves should you feel the need for applause or the reverse of that. Whilst members might like it, it does tend to slow the meeting down. Thank you very much. Right, moving on then, perhaps I could introduce the officers around the table here, on the far right there. Matthew Evans, Head of Planning. Elizabeth Sims, Development and Control Manager. Tim Bryson, who is the Principal Planning Officer, I believe, who has the task to address this application this evening. And on his left, Paul Hardwick, who is the team leader for the western area and southern area, I think. On my left is Maurice Byham, who is the Vice Chairman of the Committee. And on my right, two members of Committee Services. My immediate right is Emma Deersley and...
Gary Wood.
Gary. Welcome, Gary. Moving on then, item one, members, on the agenda, the minutes of our meeting held on the 30th of March. Is it your wish that I sign those as a correct record?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I shall do that later, Emma. Apologies, Emma?
We have apologies from Councillors Paddy Blackdon, Michael Goodridge, Stephen O'Grady, Breen Morgan and Stephen Hill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Disclosure of interests?
None before the meeting, thank you.
Any late disclosures, members? It does occur to me, of course, it was councillor Blackdon who asked for this, but he deferred. So I'm surprised he's not actually here this evening. However, obviously they are pressing other engagement. Item four, questions by members of the public?
None, Chief Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll move on then to the matter for consideration this evening, an application for planning permission. Item WA 2014/ Y 1565, land at Crondle Lane Farnham. An outline application for the erection of up to 120 dwellings, together with associated access, parking, public open space and landscaping, as amended by additional information received on the 17th of November 2014, 4th of February, 19th of March and amplified by email dated the 20th of March 2015, at land at Crondle Lane. Elizabeth, I think you're starting us off.
Thank you very much, Chairman. By way of introduction, I would just like to make a few key points in relation to the application. And I will then pass over to Tim Bryson, the case officer, to take the committee through the plans in more detail. Members will recall that the committee deferred this application at its meeting on the 18th of February, and this was for two reasons. Firstly, to enable consultation with Hampshire County Council Highway Authority on the application. And secondly, to allow officers to explore with the applicants whether the land to the north of the site could be provided as SANG to support the proposed residential development. For reference, that land is shown on the plan on the screen, which is outlined in blue, which is, Tim is now showing you. Accordingly, consultation with Hampshire County Council has been carried out and its response is reported in the update report. Now, Tim will talk to that further, but the conclusion is that Hampshire County Council has not raised any concern in relation to this application, including the provision of SANG at Crookham Park in relation to highway safety or capacity in Hampshire. In relation to the land to the north of the site, Natural England has confirmed that the land is insufficient in size to constitute SANG. The proposal in respect of SANG provision therefore remains unchanged, with the proposed and preferred use of Crookham Park for this purpose. But alternatively, if this is not acceptable to the council, use of Farnham Park through the council's avoidance strategy. Notwithstanding this, the applicants have amended the proposal to include the provision of the land, as shown on the screen, as an area of public open space to serve the development to be secured through a Section 106 legal agreement. And this is reflected in the revised heads of terms in the report, and I hope members have a chance to look at that. Officers considered that this is a significant new benefit of the scheme to be weighed into the planning balance in members' assessment this evening. Returning to SANG, much concern was expressed at the last meeting in relation to the relative distance of Crookham Park to the application site and the fact that people may choose to visit the SPA for recreational purposes due to its closer proximity to the application site. Now, in relation to this, I do feel it's important to rehearse the strategic approach to the SPA mitigation that underpins Natural England's support for Crookham Park. Enhancements to that SANG will potentially divert or attract existing users of the SPA from within the five-kilometre buffer zone that live closer to Crookham Park site. Live closer to the Crookham Park site. In other words, the Crookham Park proposal is not only targeting residents of the new development, but all potential users of the SPA catchment, to achieve no net likely significant effect on the conservation interest. So I think it's important to recognise that strategic approach to SANG, rather than purely concentrating on whether SANG at Crookham Park will effectively divert all residential recreational interest from this development. It's a slightly wider approach that Natural England adopts in terms of analysing the likely significant effect. If the committee remains concerned about the effectiveness of Crookham Park as suitable SANG, then members need to alternatively consider the proposal to use Farnham Park through the avoidance strategy. Officers advise that there is no reasonable planning objection that could be sustained to the use of Farnham Park, subject to the conclusion of a suitable legal agreement in the normal way. I trust this update is helpful to members. I'm now going to pass over to Tim Bryson, who'll take members through the plans and determining issues in more detail. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So, members, starting off with the site location. The site is located to the north side of Crondle Lane, also to the rear of the rear gardens of the existing properties on Beavers Road. The site is currently a piece of agricultural land that is used for low-intense crop farming, which is cut for hay. This provides with an aerial view of the application site. Some worthy features of note on this aerial view is this bank of trees here on the western side. To the area to the west of this is proposed to be retained and undeveloped. Members, this is an extract from the Farnham inset of the local plan proposals map. I thought this would be useful to show as it captures the eastern part of the site here, and it just gives you an spatial indication of the location of the site in relation to the town centre boundary, the central shopping area, conservation area, the castle and really the main built-up area of Farnham. Turning to the proposal itself, it is an outline application with all matters reserved except for access for up to 120 dwellings. A mix of dwellings have been provided, which are outlined in the agenda before you. Of this mix, 40% of the proposed dwellings will be for affordable housing, all on-site. The proposed access to the site would be off Crondle Lane to the south here. This plan here provides with indicative land use plan. As outlined earlier by Elizabeth, the scheme now includes an area of provision of public open space on land to the north, which is under the applicant's remit. You can see here, the area outlined in yellow is the area indicated for residential. This area here, and the attenuation basin pond here, is proposed to be undeveloped too. This is indicated to form part of the Sud Strangish scheme, to ensure that the surface water is dealt with. In terms of, it is outline application, but the applicants have indicated the likely scale of the proposed dwellings. They have outlined that it would be a mixture of two to two-and-a-half-storey dwellings, two-and-a-half-storey being here, outlined in the darker orange, with two-story to the remainder. Here is some indicative elevations of how they envisage a scheme coming forward for the site. They'll be largely using traditional building materials and traditional built form for housing that is seen within Surrey. This is a closer up of the proposed access. So the proposed access would be punched through to the site here. The existing access at the moment is here. So the proposed access would be moved further up Crondle Lane, away from nearest residential property on Beavers Close. The level of visibility displays can be achieved here and here to make the access safe. The Highway Authority own a large proportion of the land from the road into the bank, and so visibility can be achieved. As part of the scheme, a number of highway improvements are proposed. This is a plan showing proposed tactile paving to enhance the crossing at the Crondle Lane and West Street junction, which is south of the site. In addition to this, it is proposed for a pedestrian puffing crossing to be installed between this junction and the junction of the borough further along West Street. At this stage, the Highway Authority can't specifically indicate where that will be, but that is to be tied under the legal agreement. Running through some site photographs now, this is a view on Crondle Lane. You can see the existing access here on the right. The proposed access would punch through here, largely between these two lamp posts. So a number of vegetation here would be removed and some further landscaping would be put here to close off the existing access. This is a view south on Crondle Lane, taken from the existing access. The proposal also includes linking the existing pedestrian footpath to the proposed access point, so all this would become pedestrian footpath. This is a view north within the site. The trees you can see here is the bank of trees which are on the northern end of the site, so the proposed housing would be in this area here. And this is a view east. On the right-hand side, you can see the rear boundaries of the properties on Beavers Close. In the distance, you can just see there a porter cabin, which I believe belongs to university. A view southeast from within the site, from the north-west corner, again here, the university buildings, and this is the rear of Beavers Road properties. And again, a view further south, where you can see here more the Beavers Close properties. A view taken from the southwest, sorry, northeast corner of the site looking southwest. And again, from the southeast corner looking northwest within the site. This is the western area, which is proposed to be retained and undeveloped as part of the proposal. This would fall under the management of the public open space within the scheme, and that is to be tied under the legal agreement. And this is a view of the northern field, which is now proposed to be as public open space under this proposal. And, members, this is a wider view taken from north of the site, from an existing public footpath. This here in front of you, the banquet of trees, that is the northern boundary, you could say, of the site. So that gives you an indication of how the site relates to the fields to the north. I'm going to turn your attention now to the update sheet. You'll see that we have advised that from the 6th of April, there will be some changes to how infrastructure contributions are collected. So that is for your information there. The last meeting, members, proposed that the construction deliveries hours was changed to one of the conditions, and that is their proposed before condition seven. We've had a number of responses from some outstanding consultees. The key ones here, Natural England and Hampshire County Council. The county council have confirmed they have no concerns with the proposal in regard to highways from their point of view. We have also had some additional representations, and you'll see officers' response to those there. Further to the update sheet, and since that was produced, we have had an additional letter from Farnham Town Council, who have outlined that retain their objection to the scheme in regards to impact on air quality and the use of SANGs at Church Crookham. We have also had an additional letter from Hart District Council, who have outlined that they have no objection to the proposal, subject to Hart being party to the legal agreement in regards to securing the SANG at Church Crookham. Hart have also suggested conditions in relation to the SANG. However, officers have reviewed these conditions and they are already captured under condition 28 of our officers' committee report before you. In terms of the key determining issues for this proposal, as outlined earlier, the site is enclosed what's suited to the amenities and facilities of Farnham. The site adjoins a designated developed area of Farnham, and as such, officers consider the location is suitable for housing development. The mix of dwellings proposed satisfies current up-to-date housing, greatest housing need figures for the borough. Affordable housing, the scheme proposed before you is for 40% on-site affordable housing. This is 10% more than current local plan policy requires for developments within settlements. Officers acknowledge the scheme, the existing site is undeveloped and therefore does have a contribution to the countryside and area of strategic visual importance. However, officers consider the benefits of the scheme outweigh objections on these policy grounds. Officers are satisfied that on the indicative layout, that the impact on residential amenity to neighbouring properties would not be materially harmful. Further, officers are satisfied that all heritage features have been considered and there would not be a materially harmful effect on the setting of these features. And the provision of amenity and play space with the additional three hectares proposed now is an added significant benefit to the scheme. So overall, members, officers recommend permission be granted, as outlined on the update sheet before you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Tim. I've been advised, in fact, that Mr Blackdon is in hospital, which strikes me as being a very valid reason for him not being here this evening, and I'm sure we will all wish him a speedy recovery. Moving on then to item six now, the public speaking, we have three speakers. Firstly, Mr Edge and Mr Williamson. As you will know, Mr Edge, you have five minutes between the two of you. You'll have a green light for four-and-a-half minutes, a yellow one for 30 seconds, and when you get the red one, I'll let you have a couple of sentences to wind up and then I'll have to cut you off. When you're ready, please go ahead.
Councillors, you supplied with adequate means at the last meeting to confidently reject this planning application, should you have wished to do so. I was surprised that neither the council officers, nor for that matter the developers, addressed at the meeting a point that was raised in the consultation, particularly since it involved potential litigation. Namely, that the development will have such a detrimental effect on the ongoing viability of the local farmer's sheep breeding activity in the neighbouring field, lest it's likely to cause the farmer to lose his livelihood. Pregnant use and housing estates do not sit well together, but the less-than-helpful intervention from the chairman, that the dog-walking route should be extended by using the footpath through the centre of the field where the user kept, would prove disastrous. I assume the chairman is more familiar with planning than farming. Sacrosisus is the scourge of sheep farmers and is spread by parasites in dog faeces and causes serious illness, death to the sheep. Farmers such as this are the glue which hold the local community together, not just the community, but the infrastructure. In this case, three generations who have repaired the tracks, cut the hedges, kept the ditches clear, acted as a neighbourhood watch. My question is, therefore, have the officers sought any information concerning this local farmer and the effect it might have on the viability of this farm? Have they approached the National Farmers' Union, as I have, to take soundings as to their view on the constructive removal of the livelihood of a local farmer? Have they checked the legal position with respect to this potential constructive removal of a farmer's livelihood? Or have they chosen to ignore the written objection submitted in the public consultation period and not even mentioned it to the councillors here present, so that it could be considered as part of the balanced argument of the meeting? I mean, the other, only alternative is that the representatives have in fact chosen to ignore it. Thank you.
I want to comment firstly on the changes to the applications at the last meeting, which are clear on pages 11 and 12 of the agenda. The inclusion of the public open space would be an essential improvement as partial compensation for the clear loss of amenity of use by local residents of the complete site. However, such an open space must be in perpetuity as SANGs would be. If the intention is that there must be a permanent change of use through a legal agreement, the recommendation should make this clear. And I'm not sure myself, the current situation, because the words have changed on this in the recent update, I've not really had time to assess them. But I would like councillors to consider that question of whether it's permanent, the open space use. We also see no reason why the 0.988 hectares to the southwest of the site, dark on page 11 in the diagram, should not also be included explicitly as public open space. Secondly, I want to repeat the other reasons why it is possible for you to reject this application, which I made at the previous meeting, as they still apply. Firstly, the officer report itself says that officers agree that the development would be in clear conflict with Policy C5, that's the ASVI Strategic Visual Importance Policy, which conflict must be weighed against other considerations. So to summarise these other considerations, firstly, as well as being in conflict with C5, this application conflicts with local policy D1, it will cause material detriment to the environment and general amenity. Secondly, MPPF 110 requires land of the least amenity and environmental value to be allocated first for development. This land has been used for decades for dog-walking. Of seven available greenfield sites in Farnham proposed in the neighbourhood plan survey, it was the only one residents voted to reject. Whilst it was noted at the last meeting of this committee that strictly MPPF 110 refers to new plans rather than specific applications, if you are deciding to weigh other considerations to grant a development against policy, this can be such a consideration to weigh. The proposed air quality conditions have no chance of helping the existing nearby AQMA at which pollution levels are already illegal. That's, I think, another of the town council's complaint. And yet, the proposal still emits making a right-of-way of the direct pedestrian route into central Farnham in conflict with MPPF 75, adding up to 0.5 of a kilometre to the walk into the town centre and encouraging people into their cars. And finally, SANGs waverly have the legal responsibility to show that no reasonable scientific doubt remains as to the absence of adverse effects from the proposed development on the SPA. SANGs at Church Crookham, five kilometres away beyond the SPA itself, sounds like a complete nonsense. On these grounds, you can reject this application, the residents' association urges you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Edge. Could you switch the microphones off, please? Thank you very much. Next speaker is from the town council, Mr Gentziani, but I'm not sure that I actually see him here. We'll move on. Let's move on then, Mr Wolf.
Thank you, Chairman, for the water. I'm recovering from flu, so I hope my voice will last for the few minutes.
With respect, I hope that you stay there.
I would endeavour to do that, yes.
Good luck with the voice and when you are ready.
Thank you, yes, okay, I'm ready. Chairman, councillors, there are no easy options when it comes to finding sites for housing in a constrained area such as Farnham. However, we all know that positive decisions must be made on the right sites, especially so given the current five-year land supply shortfall in Waverley. The application site is one of the right sites, as recognised in the council's own SHLAR exercise, as well as in the draft Farnham neighbourhood plan, given its highly sustainable location close to the town centre and essential facilities. The scheme will provide high-quality housing, including 40% affordable. The applications were deferred in February to seek both the views of Hampshire County highways, given the proximity of the county boundary, and Natural England on the scope to provide SANG on-site. In the event, Hampshire highways have confirmed they have no objection to the scheme. As regards Natural England, my client's advisers held a further meeting with them to explore the committee's wish to see SANG provided on-site in preference to the use of the Church Crookham SANG. Whilst use of the open land controlled by my clients immediately to the north of the current housing proposal more than satisfies the SANG land requirements, namely 3.18 hectares compared with the required 2.4 hectares, Natural England say that it fails the test of suitability, as we cannot provide a walk of at least 2.3 kilometres in length on the combined site. Despite this, my clients are willing to provide the 3.1 hectares north of the site as public open space, in addition to the other open land already included within the application scheme. Apologies. The committee will appreciate the difficulties we all face when confronted with meeting all of the technical issues such as SANG provision. However, I would invite you to consider this as an opportunity rather than a problem. The position remains that we meet the technical SANG requirement at Church Crookham, and there is no objection from Natural England to the application. Now, and in addition, this application provides the practical opportunity to address a problem raised by local people, mainly provision of a large open area to recreate and walk dogs. That major point of local objection is now removed. In addition, and in practical terms, for those actually wanting a longer walk, up to and beyond 2.3 kilometres, there is an excellent footpath network which connects across the north Farnham area, so in practice, this scheme now meets all reasonable recreation requirements. Finally, elsewhere in other towns, I have been involved in schemes of linked smaller SANGs, where open areas are connected to other open spaces by means of the footpath network. Given the excellent local footpath network here, my client's proposal provides a practical opportunity, when taken with other possible future schemes, to perhaps provide a scheme of linked SANGs across north Farnham, including Farnham Park. That is part of the opportunity provided by this scheme at the same time as meeting housing needs. housing needs now. This may assist in achieving a viable strategy for enabling the council and town council to consider the release of other housing sites in Farnham, should you so wish, going forward. I would ask you therefore to support my client's proposals. I would just comment briefly on two other points made by the objectors. Firstly, regarding local farming issues, and perhaps despite the issue of existing dog walking in the area and any impact that may have on livestock, I would ask you to note that the council's agricultural advisers in the update sheet have not raised any objection to my client's scheme on those grounds. Secondly, as regards the proposed public open space, I can confirm that through the section 106 agreement, the provision would be made in perpetuity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Wolf. Members, we did discuss this in some detail back on the 18th of February, but some of you may not have been at that meeting, so I see no reason why we shouldn't cover it in detail again. Mrs Potts.
Chairman, thank you very much. And firstly, can I thank both members and officers for indulging several of us who raised that deferral. I know councillor Bagdon's very sorry he can't be here tonight due to being in hospital, but I know he also had a number of concerns and obviously that's why we had that deferral. Could I just take some of the points that have been raised by the objectors and also by the developers who've spoken? First of all, the open space and now the inclusion of the, I'll call it the upper field, I think everyone will then know what I'm talking about, that really is very good to see. I'm also pleased that the developers now clarified that that will be part, I understand, of a detailed 106 legal agreement, which means that, if I'm right in thinking this, it is a much stronger, more robust agreement than purely a condition. So am I correct in thinking that in terms of securing that land as public open space in perpetuity, that is the most robust route that we can take? Could officers just clarify that point for me to start with? Thank you.
Yes, Chairman, absolutely right, councillor Potts. By using a legal agreement tool as opposed to a condition, it's a stronger means of control and the applicants themselves have confirmed in the public speaking they're prepared to offer that land for the lifetime of the development. And I suggest we, just for members' comfort, tighten that up in the recommendation, just to be absolutely clear about the fact that that will be provided for the lifetime of the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Sims, thank you, Chairman. That's very helpful. I'm also picking up on what was also stated, I think, by Mr Edge about the, well, it's not scrubland, but the sort of the piece that's sort of further down that buffer zone there, is that, are we able to include that in the same agreement? If we were minded tonight that we did go forward with this application, could that be done?
Thank you, Chairman, yes, that's the intention councillor Potts and it's picked up in the recommendation at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to SANG, I am disappointed in the outcome from Natural England. You know, I'm afraid, well, we all have a different view on it. And I believe strongly that five kilometres, five miles, whatever it is to Church Crookham is absolutely ridiculous. So I think, again, if we were minded to look at passing this tonight, we should be looking strongly at Farnham Park and potentially with, there's a better link in anyway with that, given various footpaths across to the park itself. Moving to Beavers Close, and Beavers Close hasn't been mentioned very much, but Beavers Close is really the area that's going to have the most impact from this development in terms of properties that are already there. Now, I know that there have been a few issues, that the current plan is that there would be a three-metre, if I'm right from looking at the papers, buffer zone in terms of the boundary between the proposed development and Beavers Close. Now, it's very difficult for me to really get my head around that because obviously at the moment, this is only very much an outline proposal, so we can't see exactly where all the buildings are going. But what I would like to see in that is something, is there a way we can make or condition a larger buffer zone, is that possible?
I think councillor Potts, on page 76 of the agenda, the applicants have provided a closer-up view, you could say, of that part of the site, which I think you're referring to in Beavers Close. The three-metre buffer zone would be secured via landscaping under the reserve matters stage, so that could be negotiable moving forward if it was sought to be larger than three metres.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And then finally, my other concern relates to a footpath. And this is the footpath in the south-east corner of the site. Now, it would seem that there's, for want of a better word, a ransom strip, and it looks as if, sort of, at the moment, the proposal is that people could sort of informally go across that and they'd very quickly then enter, sort of, into the town. At the moment, if they use sort of the more formal route that's being proposed on the development, they have to go a bit all round the houses, which isn't particularly practical. Now, what I'd like to understand from officers is, is there anything that can be done to try and address that in some way? That's a real concern of mine, that, you know, people are going to end up getting in their cars, because let's face it, the majority of us unfortunately do take the easy option and I'm putting myself in that category as well. And that's one of my concerns, that, you know, people are then going to get in their cars and drive around to, you know, to go to sort of one of the town car parks, which seems a bit ridiculous. So again, is there anything else that we can do at this stage about that footpath access? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Potts. I do feel perhaps we are redesigning this application before we've actually agreed anything, but let's see what the officers say anyway. Okay, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could take members to page 72 of the main agenda report, just give you a couple of seconds to find that, and it starts really where I want to take you to on paragraph four and then paragraph five. Access is before you in this application, and so therefore the point you're raising is a relevant one to the matter that's before the committee tonight. We were concerned right at the outset, as we were in looking at the permeability of the site, that it would be desirable to have an additional footpath link. And we have addressed the issue there. We've actually tried very hard to work with the applicants to try and secure the very linkage that you're referring to councillor Potts. I think the point and the response is as set out there, that the applicants have responded and indeed they've come back and, after an additional round of negotiation with the university, have responded that in fact the land is outside of their control and they have, they've failed to negotiate a footpath link across that land. And that leaves us as planning authority in the position whereby we have to weigh up whether the failure to have further connectivity against the concerns that were quite legitimately raised is so harmful to the acceptability of the site in terms of its accessibility to warrant a refusal. Now, clearly we've come to the conclusion that because of other benefits of the site and other design matters which we do find to be acceptable, that that point alone, regrettable as it is, doesn't outweigh the benefits of the site. But it is a valid concern. We have also considered in conjunction with our lawyers as to whether or not, if you came to the conclusion that you wanted to disagree with us, that notwithstanding our conclusion on it, that you felt it was so important, could you achieve that goal by imposing a planning condition to require it's being explored further or even as an obligation in the 106 agreement? The challenge is that because they don't own the land and because they haven't secured any agreement from the landowner, the imposition of such an obligation or a condition would be basically unreasonable, a unreasonable thing to impose at this stage on the applicants. So really, the only resolution to the fact is, they have tried but they can't achieve it at this stage, you'd have to weigh up whether or not you found it so harmful as to warrant a refusal on planning terms. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Looking at that map on the screen at the moment, there is also another access to the site from Beavers Road, which I believe is a vehicular access. Has any exploration been carried out there? It might be marginally longer than direct access into the south-east, but that would at least maybe do away with the need for getting into cars if you could walk down there and get onto Beavers Road.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. We have explored these and on the members' site visit, it was mentioned as well, another access point that appears to be here, but we have gone back to the applicants and they are again outside of their ownership, so they haven't been able to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mrs Potts.
Chairman, can I just come back once more, because you've obviously gathered that this, you know, I'm really pleased to see that quite a few of these areas have really been addressed. I still don't think this is the perfect application by any means, but one of my concerns is the footpath access. I fully take on board what Mrs Sims says. I understand that officers have gone back and talked again to the developer. My question is, is there nothing else that the developer can't go back and find out who owns these other pieces of land and try negotiating?
Thank you, Chairman. Certainly in terms of the main point on the eastern corner there, they're aware of who owns it, they've carried out that research and they have had direct discussions with the landowner. So I think, in fairness to them, that we've had two rounds of encouraging them to explore this, and I think actually if they could achieve it, they probably would, because I think they can see that it would add a benefit, further benefit to the scheme. But I think the negotiations have come to an end on that point at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mrs Sims. Those were the points I wanted to raise at this stage, and that's been very helpful in my understanding of the application this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Potts. Mr Storey.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. There are a number of aspects of this development which trouble me, but I'm afraid that most of them are answered by technical reports and not much I can do about them. First of all, this is one of the highest-grade hotfields of the Farnham heritage, and in fact, the town mayor said to me Stonehenge is a world heritage site and this hotfield is the equivalent for Farnham. However, the agricultural reference says it's grade three, therefore not worth much. The second thing is highways, and anybody who knows Crandall Lane knows that for most of the day, it's a single-track road because of the amount of parking that goes on at the southern end and near to the junction with West Street. And I think that the additional traffic will be a problem. However, again, a technical report, can't do anything much about that either. The footpath, I suspect that regardless of what anybody says about access through the university grounds, small boys will pretty soon make a hole through any kind of fencing or hedging and it will become an informal way through regardless of what anybody says. The Crookham Park SANG I think is just plainly ridiculous. I can understand the idea that people in Farnham North will go to Crookham Park instead of Farnham Park, thereby leaving Farnham Park capacity to allow people from this development to take themselves off there, but I think that's just ludicrous. I think we must insist that the SANG is part of the Farnham Park and ignore Crookham Park, it is untenable as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Gates.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and I'd like to thank the speakers, both who clarified a number of points and put a number of good points to us. I also found the site visit extremely valuable. It was an opportunity to look at the footpaths, the other footpaths, and to see the relationship of the site with the houses in Beavers Close and Beavers Road. That was helpful. We've already had nearly two hours discussion on this matter before we actually postponed it last time, and I think it has been entirely worthwhile postponing it. I didn't feel so at the time after two hours discussion, but I do now because it has achieved the addition in perpetuity of the northern open space, and I think that's extremely valuable. And it won't just be available for the people who live in the development, should we be minded to agree to it. And I do actually agree very much with the point that I'm quite sure informal ways will be found to get to the heart of Farnham, if you'll excuse the pun, Chairman, through that area for pedestrians. I don't in fact find Natural England's position entirely untenable, in the sense that the argument they have put is that it will relieve pressure on the SPA. I find their stance somewhat inflexible so far as the open land here is concerned, because as Mr Wolf said, and as is quite obvious, although you may not be able to walk your dog for 2.3 kilometres, I think it was Mr Byham last time who explained that not many dog walkers actually wanted to do that, but nevertheless, that seems to be one of their immutable requirements. But if you wish to walk your dog for 2.3 kilometres, why 2.3, I'm not quite sure, then there are footpaths, and if we're concerned about the sheep, then the footpaths go off to the west, and I would suspect, but I haven't, I have to admit, examined this in complete detail, but you might be able to walk a very lot further than 2.3 kilometres, probably several hundred miles on these footpaths. So I find Natural England's stance on that area somewhat inflexible, but there it is, it is what it is. But equally, they have said that Crookham Park will be acceptable. And I don't worry too much about this because my view is, A, there are 120 houses, not everybody is going to have a dog, although that's often assumed, but B, my view would be that the vast majority will use the facility that is now in perpetuity part of the development site. So actually, I don't see people either going to the SPA or to Farnham Park or to Crookham Park. Nevertheless, the provision of the facility at Crookham Park will be of a benefit to the SPA, as it's been stated by Natural England, who are... by Natural England, who are advisers on this matter. So I do accept the argument for Crookham Park, and I would prefer that Crookham Park, rather than Farnham Park, was designated as the sang. It is, remember, a designation, it is not compelling everybody to walk their dog in Crookham Park. That really dealt with that issue. My other issue is whether there could be a better site, and we've seen from one of the photographs, one of the maps, how adjacent this is, even if you had to come out at the Crandall Lane end, how adjacent this is to the excellent public facilities in Farnham. So I really think this is a site that has to be considered for the provision of homes, and in particular Chairman, for the provision of affordable homes. This weighs very heavily with me, well, members will be bored to hear me say this, but this weighs extremely heavily with me. And of course, as councillor Potts said, there are going to be disadvantages, there are disadvantages to every site that is put forward, but the provision of affordable homes in a sustainable place, close to facilities, bus routes, and other aspects that allow normal life, for me is very important. And I think that, for me, does overweigh, I think it's a pity that there isn't a direct pedestrian access at the southeastern corner, but that certainly would not be, for me, a reason for overriding that. So I therefore am unable to detect credible or sustainable planning reasons that outweigh my view that this is a sustainable site, and it does provide the very necessary homes for the very many people who would like to come and live in the delightful town of Farnham. So my view is that, on balance, we should accept the advice we've had, and that we should accept the officer's recommendation. And I would support Crookham Park as the designated sang for this, although I don't expect it to be used. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Gates. Mr Hess?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I've really only got two points to make. The first is that, on the face of the representation that Taylor Wimpy have made, this is, to all immediate impressions, a very attractive development. And certainly, the watercolour sketches we've had of the houses and the intent to make the development merge with the vernacular style is very laudable, and is entirely, I suggest, the sort of thing that we would hope to see from anybody who wants to develop a development of this nature. So that's my first point. I've got absolutely no issue with the representation that's been made. But my second point is that, is this point that, of the seven sites that have been identified as being suitable for potential development, this is the only site that has been rejected by the people of Farnham. Now, I know I'm on thin ice, because this is hardly, I fear, within our remit as a planning committee, and I have horrible suspicion I'm straying far outside of the boundaries that we are limited to. But I'm very anxious that I may be being compelled to consent to a development that flies in the face of the desire of the local people. And my concern would be that if we do approve this site, this is allowed to go ahead, that we will be selling the people of Farnham short. So my, the horns of the dilemma is, one, we have to make a decision, apparently based on very narrow planning considerations. But the other horn is that surely we have a, well, I can't believe that we don't have a moral obligation to take the wider interests of the people of Farnham, or to give those, the considerations of the people of Farnham considerable weight. And on that basis, whilst I think I would like to see a development of this sort, based upon the illustrations that have been given by Taylor Wimpy, I would like to see something like that being built for the people of Farnham, I'm afraid that I feel that you've got the wrong site. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr Ashwood?
Thanks Chairman. Just a few points, really, and following on from councillor Gates's comments, the sang at Crookham Park designated, indeed, I accept the reasoning that has come up. I also would say of Farnham Park, that will be needed amongst other things for windfall sites in the years ahead. Therefore, you know, windfall is going to happen anyway. Big houses come down, replaced by two or three, we've seen it time and time again. I'm not talking about back garden development either. One other point that Surrey Police raised here and last month on another site we looked at in Hazemere, and that's the rear courtyard parking. I personally find this unacceptable. We made the same comments on the Step Farm outline application. I would like to think that the developers will find some other answer. I don't like rear courtyard parking anyway. Page 34 makes it quite plain, this is to be discouraged for the following reasons, and it's all there to be read. I also have some concern with the number of one-bedded accommodation units. Personally, you know, fine for starter homes, but also people downsizing. If you're downsizing as a single or person or as a couple, you don't just want one bedroom, you want to have friends and family in as well. And I think the number of one beds here, and I know that I'm speaking with some sympathy with other colleagues from Farnham, I do think we've got that slightly in error. The 40% affordable homes, laudable, what a marvelous idea. And it's one of the objections, talking about the number of school places and everything else, well, there not going to be many of those from the one-bedded apartments, so that is just one little point. But if the police are worried about the rear courtyard parking, I hope they do something about speeding on Crandall Lane. You go up via Clare Park and that area, through the 20 mile an hour zone in the village, totally disregarded by all, you know. It really is something that they should be checking up on. But I thank the officers for their report, and particularly for clearing up the sang issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Mollinger?
Mulliner without the G Chairman. The first thing I'd like to ask about is whether the air quality mitigation is adequate. If we look at pages 84 to 86, and on page 86 in particular, paragraph five, it says it is further recognised that the site is within 500 metres of the Farnham AQMA, and therefore additional vehicle traffic will have a significant effect on the poor air quality in this location. Mitigation is therefore recommended by the air quality officer in the form of conditions. But when you look at the conditions, they divide into the ongoing conditions, which I would have thought were far more important, and the construction conditions, which by definition are temporary and only last for the period of construction. And it seems to me the only mitigation that's offered is the provision of electrical vehicle charging points, which will only help to the extent that people have electrical vehicles to charge, and provision of cycle storage, which is the best standard requirement anyway. And at the end of the next paragraph, it ends up with the far from reassuring words, the impact on air quality from the proposed development could be acceptable. And I'm a bit puzzled by this. Are we really happy with things which just might, could be acceptable? And when you see the thinness of the ongoing mitigation, I'm not surprised at that comment. I would like officers to comment whether this is something which we should be taking more seriously, given the fact that we start off from the position that it is within 500 metres of the AQMA, and this is meant to be something which could have a significant effect on the poor air quality in the location.
Thank you Chairman. If I could pick that point up, if I could just take members to the list of determining issues, and just to draw attention to the fact that we tend to place air quality on the left-hand side in the list, because it is a technical area, and we're personally not experts in air quality, but we're lucky to have an air quality officer in the council who routinely comments on planning applications and their implications in respect of air quality. It is a very important matter for Farnham, we do have the AQMA, and we have a duty to ensure that developments do not reduce air quality in the area. Now, they've looked at the scheme very carefully, and their conclusion is that it wouldn't be reasonable to refuse it as a substantive objection. So we then have to ask ourselves the question, can it be satisfactorily mitigated? Now, these are the conditions that have been recommended, and the conclusion they've reached with the inclusion of them, that they would satisfactorily mitigate that likely impact. And I think it would be quite challenging for us to come to a conclusion that there were other conditions that could be imposed that they haven't otherwise identified. But I'm happy to hear if you've got any suggestions, councillor Mulliner, to add any additional conditions. Thank you Chairman.
Well, no, to be honest, I mean, whereas I understand very well that when it's a matter of principles, members are usually well advised not to argue, but they're certainly not barred from arguing. It is possible that experts occasionally are wrong. And sometimes that great friend, common sense, can suggest that they are wrong. And highways comments seem to me to be a particularly fruitful area for that. But I'm just reading what's in the report, and I have to say, I have not seen in that report on page 86, the sort of confident statement that these mitigation measures would be sufficient to render this application acceptable. I think it's very equivocal. The word is, the air quality, the impact could be acceptable. And I have to say, in all seriousness, I think this falls below the standard, if you're taking the precautionary principle, which is what we normally do in these things. And frankly, this to me, like someone waving a flag which is certainly orange in colour, and conceivably even redder than that. And I'm very surprised it hasn't been given more mileage, if you like, in the discussions. So I'll come back to that in a minute. On the sang, I listened carefully to what you said about the sort of indirect impact of the Crookham Park sang. But can I ask, is it already in operation as a sang? Because most of it has been already obtained for an existing application, if you read the words on page 95. It says that some of the 72.4 hectares was taken up with a planning permission for residential development with Hart District Council. And under the usual rules, it has to be available before that application, sorry, before that development is finished. I don't know whether it is or not. But as far as you know, is the sang actually in operation, a sang already?
Chairman, if I can answer that from personal knowledge, but also I think it is reflected in the report, that that formed part of the mitigation or the avoidance strategy for a major housing scheme in Church Crookham. So it is in place. But I think what the report highlights is that, in the same way as Farnham Park, there is quite considerable amounts of capacity left at Crookham Park to accommodate the SPA impacts of this development. So in summary, it is there already.
That wasn't the point I was getting at. Now, I had followed all that. It's just that Mrs Sims made the interesting point, that the purpose of designating this distant sang was to relieve pressure on the SPA. But if it's already being used fairly actively as sang anyway, I don't really see how it's going to have that particular indirect effect. And we come back to the point that Mr Storey and others have made, that to have sang, which is twice as far away from the development as the SPA is trying to protect, and you're going in the same direction of course, does seem rather strange. And I would actually join those who would prefer to see Farnham Park used. So that if that limits development in Farnham in future, so be it. But it makes far more sense a sang than Crookham Park. And my last point, if we go back to the map of the area, I think even more important than pedestrian access, is the fact this only has one access point onto a busy road, which could quite conceivably be blocked by some form of traffic incident. And this is a perfectly good five-bar gate in the corner by the university. It does seem very unfortunate that that can't be at least available for emergency access. I think as a planning committee, we should be thinking of various things, and the possibility that the road might be impossible when someone needs an ambulance. And it seems wrong, in my opinion, that we can't at least seek the developer to get at least emergency access, even if the university is not prepared to see full-time access. And I would like to see that investigated before it comes up for reserve matters, if it is indeed passed. So to summarise, I have a serious point about air quality. I am surprised it hasn't been taken up more. And indeed, I am inclined not to agree with the officer's recommendation on that point alone. The other matters, the sang, I take councillor Gates's point, that in reality, the actual sang will be the north field. But I think the air quality matter and the access point for emergency vehicles are matters which do worry me.
Thank you very much, Mr Mulliner. Sorry, I couldn't read my writing here. I was just guessing what I'd scribbled down. Members. Mr Thompson?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The site visit this morning was indeed, oh, Monday, yeah, well, I can remember being there at least, was very useful. And we walked a considerable part of the site, and had the opportunity to look at the proposed public open space. And like other members, in all practical terms, looking at the amount of amenity space, it is considerable, and I think would more than serve the needs of that community for all practical reasons. I too am disappointed about the lack of access, because from the bottom southeast corner, it is a short walk right to the Waitrose Car Park, right to all amenities. It means that you can do most of your daily travel requirements, if you live there and work locally, or use the station, without using a car. And I think that's a point that will impact on air quality, as is already mentioned in the report. The building line to the north-northwest side is on the same line with buildings on the other side of Crandall Lane and with the university car park. So it doesn't feel as if it is encroaching, and indeed, with the changing levels on the site, when you stand at the, in the middle of the site where the last houses are going towards the northwest, and you look along a line, it reads, on the landscape, it makes sense if the houses stop there, where indeed they will. In terms of its density, 20 point, whatever it is, houses per hectare, looking at the way they're laid out, and looking at the areas where the swale is, and the buffer zones, it looks comfortable in terms of a community that is going to live and use that space. It's 40% affordable. There are a lot of small units. We cannot forget that people need homes. And on top of that, although I am disappointed about the vehicular access being only along Crandall Crandall Lane, looking at the improvements that have been recommended by Surrey Highways, the new access is far better than the existing area and it will improve the crossing there, which has no facility to walk on a pavement if you turn left going from the south-west to the, onto the side where the site entrance will be. So the visibility's better and the safety's better. So that is an improvement for the wider community there who will also be using that crossing. So whilst I understand that neighbours have misgivings and I know that Farnham council have put in their objections, on balance, and it is a balance, on balance, this number of affordable homes in such an accessible location that is part of what an existing community is not isolated, is well-planned and has amenity space sufficient to make living there feasible with a dog, although we're getting a bit obsessed about dog walking, I have to say. I quite like to go out there and kick a ball around with kids and stuff and there's plenty of room for that. And it's safe, it's a safe play area for children well away from roads. On balance, I have to say, if you're going to make Farnham bigger, you can do a lot worse than build on this site.
Thank you very much, Mrs Fowesewski.
Thank you, Chairman. I wasn't going to speak on this because I think last time in February I said quite enough, so I'm not going to repeat much of what I said there. I did welcome a deferral and I supported it. However, my position does remain unchanged because, again, on balance, and like my previous speaker said, it is a balancing argument, the feedback that's come back from that period of deferral hasn't convinced me sufficiently enough to sacrifice another of our green fields. And whilst it is a matter of judgment, the location, the impact and the amenity are also very, very important factors. Nobody can deny that 40% of housing is a well-worth, completely applaudable thing to do, but it shouldn't be at the expense of a wrong location. We could spend all evening arguing whether this location is a good location or whether it's a wrong location. So I think we have to get that into some kind of perspective. I would also add to that from what councillor Hess has said and what councillor Mulliner has said, it only strengthens and reinforces my concerns and unless I hear anything different here this evening, I'm afraid I could not support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mrs James.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm never happy when we're faced with what I call, or what we refer to as an outline planning application, when the aspects are contentious and we've seen this evening, and I'm grateful to councillor Mulliner for raising one area, which I think is, if you like, raised the rating in terms of conscientiousness, even higher. If we have a situation where air quality ought to be considered more so, then I think that is something that this council and this planning committee ought to consider in a lot more depth and I'm just somewhat surprised that we didn't identify this at the last meeting. The harm for me of developing this site versus leaving it is not outweighed by a 40% figure of affordable housing. If we're going to give up this site to housing, I would want to see a lot larger proportion. And I think it's a mistake the council's made over the last few years that we haven't done something about putting that in place and allowing, and forcing developers, quite frankly, to deliver a higher proportion of affordable. So at the moment, the concerns I had previously, they've not been overturned and I'm not going to go with the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Officers, I wonder if I might bring you back to some of the points raised, particularly, I think, by Mr Williamson as regards the viability of the adjacent farm and particularly the sheep who might be affected, indeed fatally, by the presence of dog faeces there. Although, one has to say, of course, that with these public footpaths and the fairly intensive use by dog walkers over the years, this is a problem that may perhaps be considered already and not necessarily carry a vast amount of weight. I think also there was a question from our public speakers as regard permanent open space use which had been covered and your assurance that section 106 covering that will be strengthened, the condition will be strengthened, is very, very welcome. I think members, on the site visit, if you looked at the south-east corner, whilst there had been a fair amount of attempts by dropping tree trunks and other debris to try and prevent pedestrians getting out there, they were still using it and very well using it, along with the other one, the other vehicular access coming in from Beaver's Road, that too appears to be very, very well used by pedestrians. So that whilst the applicant does not seem to have been able to secure an agreement with the adjacent landowners in that respect, local people do seem to have made their own choices. A suggestion perhaps that a predominance of one-bedroom accommodation, well, this application, or rather, a later application as regards all the reserved matters, will need to be considered at some time in the future by a new joint planning committee because I don't think that one will come to this one. So members at that time will actually have the opportunity of dealing with it. As regards air quality and the sang out at Crookham Park, I still find it perverse, really, that natural England requires 2.3 kilometres of dog-walking paths, when you can do a couple of tours of the footpaths on this site already, including the North Field, and you've probably covered a lot more than 2.3 kilometres anyway. I find it perverse as well that there might possibly be a need for residents in this proposed development and indeed elsewhere in Beaver's Close, Beaver's Lane, Crandall Lane, wherever, sorry, Beaver's Row, to get in their cars and impact air quality in Farnham just to satisfy the demands of natural England, when those requirements really for walking dogs, or indeed, as we discussed last time on the 18th of February, small children as well, can be satisfied by what is already available on the site. But I wonder, officers, if you might have a response to the business of the adjacent farm and the sheep?
Chairman, thank you. If I could draw members' attention to page 57 of the agenda report. And at the very bottom of that page, we do address as a starting principle the loss of the agricultural land and, of course, your policy in the local plan, which is borne out by the NPPF advice, is that we need to consider whether releasing the land from agriculture would adversely affect the viability of an existing farm holding or whether it would result in the loss of high-quality agricultural land. In relation to that, we do seek expert advice because, again, we're not experts on farm classifications and the assessment of agricultural land. And the update sheet halfway down the second page does give you the response of the council's agricultural consultants. And Tim did make reference to it before, but just because it's been raised, if I could just go through the points there, they've concluded that the land consists of one principal field of semi-improved grassland which is used for purposes of making hay, haylage for feeding livestock and that the agricultural grading is grade three and it's evident that the field has been planted with grass, that the keeping of any livestock on the land would have been difficult in practical terms, given the close proximity of the urban development and associated public access, and that land is considered to be low-value agricultural land. So they've assessed there whether there would be a harmful loss of agricultural land, but their assessment is also requiring from us that they assess whether the loss of that land would result in the fragmentation of any existing holding. So their assessment does take into account the effect on agriculture more generally and the conclusion is, from their viewpoint, that there is no objection to the conversion of this land from agriculture. So that's the best response we can give you to the farming questions that have been raised. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. And I rather assume perhaps that if the dog walkers who have used this site for a number of years already have not actually come into conflict with the sheep in an adjacent field, it is adequately fenced and it will remain so, so that whilst that might be a concern, at the moment it's not actually materialised as such. Mr Gates.
Thank you, Chairman. I just think we should dwell for a moment or two more on this issue of air quality. If we look at page 86, penultimate paragraph, removing one letter and replacing it with another letter would have satisfied councillor Mulliner. Mind you, we all have great respect for our legal colleagues in this matter. I personally, having experienced officer speak for very, very many years, I think the officer who wrote that is actually trying to say it would be acceptable. Now, I come to that conclusion not lightly, but because on pages 36, 37 and 38, the whole issue of air quality is addressed. It would seem to be, to be rather curious if the officer, having started out with the premise that this does need mitigation and then recommending, I think it's eight different conditions, did not recommend those conditions and then come to the conclusion that it's still not acceptable. I would suggest that he has recommended those conditions in order that it becomes acceptable. Now, this may appear to be a bit casuistic, but that would be the conclusion I would draw from this. The officer on the first point feels mitigation is necessary, he then recommends the mitigation that he believes will mean he will not object. And you can't half-object. You either object or you don't object. If you're in the position to recommend conditions, I think we're entitled to assume that those conditions in themselves are sufficient to remove his or her objection. That's my interpretation of that. Otherwise, why bother with any conditions at all? Just say it's impossible to mitigate and say that they object. I interpret this as a non-objection. Thank you, Chairman. So I'm not concerned about it.
Very much, Mr Gates. Mr Byrne.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, Mr Gates vaguely misrepresented me earlier when saying about dogs, I was walking a small dog and he did not want to go any further. Small dogs seem to be very much in vogue nowadays and therefore perhaps all of the people who have dogs on this potential site, if it's given planning permission, will be small ones and only need shorter walks. It's clear when we went on our site visit, the, in fact, the number of dog walkers on that site, I thought at first were protesters, because that's what happens at various places. If we're going to do a site visit, people hear that we're going and therefore they get out with their wellies on and wander around, looking a little menacing perhaps and trying to convince us that we shouldn't be there and it's happened in many other areas that we've been to. Clearly they weren't because I then found that students were using the cross-run across the site, at least they appeared to be students, I didn't question them at all, using that as a run-through to the university as opposed to going down to Beaver's Road or whatever. So it's been well-used there. I'd rather, I have to say, tongue-in-cheekly, I'd rather the comment about the mayor of Farnham saying that this is Farnham Stonehenge. Stonehenge had some stones there, which I represented what was there before, although a little smaller than perhaps it was originally. We haven't got a single hot pool on the site here to give it a designation that people will recognise. I wonder how many people in Farnham actually understand that it was a hot field. I know so many people do because we have people here at the entrance telling us that. Overall, I believe if we cannot develop this site, then we have little chance of developing any sites. And we've said this before of other areas, including in my own village in Bramley, where we gave permission for a 24-house development on a plot which, in a way, rounded off the urban boundary of the village and this in some way achieves that. I think we've achieved a great deal from the deferral in that the field that is now designated as open space for, in perpetuity for use of residents here and other people of Farnham is a great achievement. It gives them the space that they can use for recreation, it also gives them, gives us the reassurance that that field is not open for development in the future, which is one of the concerns that I had previously in trying to strike it out. Eight years ago, we had, eight or nine years ago, we had the imposition of sangs on us and I can remember especially Farnham members talking about, we won't be able to build anything if we can't find a sang. The developer comes along with a sang and we say, we don't like it. I'm sure that most people, again, who have dogs, don't know the word sang and don't understand where it is or whatever. They take the dog where they think it's the right place for them and their dog to have the exercise. It would be interesting to know how many people actually use any of the sangs because it is that, rather than because that's where they just fancy taking their dog for a walk. So overall, I'm in strong support of this application. I think we've come up with all the right conclusions and the deferral has given us the reassurances that we have with regard to the land and gained, given us much better control over that land for the future of residents of Farnham and I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Ms Thompson, you wanted to come back?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to, Mr Chairman. Just to agree 100% with councillor Gates' observations on air quality. And if you think, in the greater scheme of things, down through history, air is getting cleaner, they're now punishing diesel. The government will be doing far more to phase out the use of diesel engines as we go forward. More people will be getting electric cars and quite honestly, those houses are going to be there for, I should hope, 100, 150 years or so. So to say no to them on the basis of the air quality in 2015, I think is a little short-sighted.
Thank you very much. Mr Mulliner.
I wanted to come back. Changing one letter in a word can have very serious consequences. Go from gates to games, for example, which is something completely different. But I did want to ask the officers how they reacted to my concerns that the advice given by the air quality officer appeared to be some, a little equivocal. And this is something which could well come up with many other applications in Farnham. So I think it is a serious point and I do feel troubled by the lack of certainty. And I repeat the point I made, that most of the conditions are actually about the construction period, which gives me far less concern as it lasts only a short time, whereas the ongoing problem is by definition one that could last even the 100 to 150 years that councillor Thompson referred to. But what do the officers feel about the amount of certainty being given, the amount of certainty of advice being given by the AQMA?
Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
Chairman, if it helps, I'm happy to change the wording of the report to would. Thank you, Chairman.
Late perhaps, Elizabeth. Members, any further speakers? Mr Hess.
At the risk of being repetitive, I just think I'm compelled to refer back to the fact that this is the least desirable site of the seven that were identified as potential sites for development and I'm very concerned that this seems to be a remarkably arrogant position to take, that we as a planning committee will see this site imposed on the people of Farnham, when there seem to be another six sites which have been deemed to be more attractive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hess, but I do feel that we have to take the applications in the order in which they come, so that if there are other sites that have not yet been applied for, we do have to consider this one.
And this seems to be a recurring weakness of the planning process, which is more appropriate to making decisions on the basis of individual dwelling extensions or individual houses, but really comes unstuck when we're faced with large-scale developments of this nature. I have no objection with the development, it appears on the face of it to be extremely attractive and well- well presented development. My concern is that it is this this single site that has been deemed to be least desirable and attractive of the seven that have been identified.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hess. Mrs. Potts.
Thank you for allowing me to come back, Chairman. I wonder if I could ask a question about the revised recommendation? For some clarity, please.
We'll be coming to that once we've done all the speakers. But and I think that Elizabeth already has some words to put the committee as regards the revised recommendation.
Can I ask a question about the recommendation that's there? Just to be clear. If we go sort of almost halfway down where it starts to talk in this revised recommendation about providing for appropriate sang and then it talks about to avoid a likely significant effect upon the SPA including payment of appropriate contributions, blah, blah, blah. And it talks about, I'm presuming either Church Crookham or Farnham Park in that part of the recommendation. So my question is, and I'm afraid it's a very Janet and John question. Who is making the decision about whether it's if it would be, if this did go through Farnham Park or Church Crookham? Thank you.
I rather think it's the committee here actually, Mrs. Potts, but let's see what Elizabeth has to say.
Thank you, Chairman. I think and I apologize if it didn't come across but that was part of the reason I go those introductory words at the beginning that the applicant's preference remains to provide sang through Crookham Park. But their proposal is twofold that if members decide they don't want to support Crookham Park then the Farnham Park proposal is on the table as an alternative. So it is open to you to vote to strike out the requirement to provide sang at Crookham Park which leaves you with a requirement on them if you're still minded to accept the proposal to provide it at Farnham Park. And while I'm speaking, Chairman, if I could apologize that the last three lines of the recommendation show a track changed deletion of the wording. And that may explain the confusion of one of the public speakers but I'm afraid we hadn't noticed that. That's a typographical error, I'm afraid. That the original recommendation in the agenda requires that the applicant first to secure any necessary planning permission or advertisement consent for the adjacent open space. And we need to leave that in because it may be in providing the open space through the legal agreement they will want to carry out some minor work such as signage or fencing which might require planning permission. So before through the legal agreement then providing the open space, they would need to seek the relevant planning permission. And members of the committee may recall this exactly the same provision that we placed on the Sturt Farm sang legal agreement that those other permissions be put in place if they are required before the legal agreement can agree that they provide the open space. So it's just tying everything up to make sure it's certain in planning terms. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify that, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Would it be appropriate that I invited the committee in fact to express a preference either for Crookham Park or Farnham Park? Mr. Gates.
I shall ad formally propose that we accept Crookham Park as the designated sang. I won't go into the arguments anymore and I've already done so. I believe I have a second.
And we do have a second. Members, we have a proposed and seconded recommendation that we favour Crookham Park for sang should this application be approved rather than Farnham Park. Can I see those members in favour of Crookham Park, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Are those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Any abstentions?
Any abstentions? One?
One.
It then falls to me to make a decision, I believe. And having... Mrs. James.
Chairman, thank you. Can I ask for my, that I voted against that to be recorded in the minutes, please?
I'm sure you can, yes. Mrs. Potts.
Likewise, please, Chairman. Thank you.
Anybody else wants their vote recorded? No? Having already voted for Crookham Park, I'll use my co-casting vote in favour of that as well. So Crookham Park it is. Elizabeth, you mentioned there would be a strengthening of the condition as regards the section 106 and the North Field and one or two other things. I wonder if I might press you perhaps to read what the officer's recommendation now looks like.
Thank you, Chairman. I would suggest it would read as follows that subject to the inclusion of the above amended condition, that's number seven, the applicant entering into a section 106 agreement to secure and insert these words for the lifetime of the development affordable housing, community facilities, education, libraries, playing pitches, play space, open space, sports stroke leisure centres, recycling, recycling and other environmental improvements and to provide for appropriate sang to avoid a likely significant effect upon the SPA. And I suggest in there you include in respect of Crookham Park including payment of appropriate contributions to SAM comma, a section two, seven, eight agreement with the county highway authority to secure means of access, pedestrian accessibility stroke safety improvements, highway infrastructure and sustainable transport improvements, a travel plan, repairs and improved access to public footpaths, the setting up of a management company for the management of onsite and adjacent open space to require the applicant to first secure any necessary planning permission or advertisement consent for the adjacent open space and subject to conditions one to twenty nine on pages one hundred and twelve to one hundred and twenty two and informatives one to seventeen on pages one, two, two to one, two, three. Permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Hopefully everybody got that. So let's move to that revised recommendation. And can I see those members in favour of that revised recommendation, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Those against?
One, two.
Abstentions?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
It looks, members, that with that revised recommendation, permission is granted. Mrs. James, you would like your vote recorded?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, James.
Mrs. Forizovski would like hers recorded. Anybody else? No? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I don't believe that this will be the last joint planning committee this side of May the seventh. So I think we will be meeting again a little later this month. But in the meantime, have a safe journey home and thank you for being with us this evening.